Good afternoon, I'm Kathleen Brown, School Board Chair in the Administrative Informal Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia. This convened at 4:00 PM on the, this 11th day of February 2025. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll do School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Do any School Board members have anything to report? Seeing none, that brings us to our first presentation, pre-K and Early Childhood Update. We welcome Dr. Myers Dob, the Executive Director of Office Programs for Exceptional Children, the Director of Title I Programs, Laura Silverman.
Hi. All right. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I am here today with my colleague Laura Silverman, Title I Director, to share some high-level overview information related to early childhood programs in Virginia Beach City Public Schools regarding how we serve our youngest Virginia Beach students. I would like to begin by highlighting Goal One, Strategy One of our school divisions' Compass to 2025 Strategic Framework. As you can see, our division has prioritized the expansion of early childhood education. This focus continues to be important in our Compass to 2030 Strategic Framework, and both the Office of Programs for Exceptional Children, OPEC, and our elementary and Title I teams have shown a great commitment to providing meaningful experiences for the youngest learners we serve. Under Part C of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, children with disabilities begin receiving services as infants and toddlers through the Infant and Toddler Connection of Virginia Early Intervention System. Children may receive such services up to the age of three. Prior to turning three and as early as age two, staff from Infant, Toddler, and Connection provide notification to the school division of children potentially eligible under IDEA Part B. The school division then must complete the eligibility process and have an IEP in place prior to the third birthday or start of the school year. The transition from Part C to Part B is one of the indicators, Indicator 12, that is reported on for the school division as part of the Special Education Performance Report each year. The majority of other referrals received by the Preschool Assessment Center are initiated by parents and caregivers. Once a referral is received, a multidisciplinary team reviews the referral information to determine the suspicion of a disability. As part of the eligibility process, most assessments are conducted through an arena assessment process where one team member interacts with a child and family while other team members observe. Some students attend the diagnostic classroom at FACE for a few hours each day for two weeks, which allows the team to gather authentic assessment data in a classroom setting. This assessment process provides data which is more sensitive to social, emotional, and behavioral delays. It is a process not used in all divisions, but it's one which has been used in Virginia Beach City Public Schools for more than 25 years. So the data in this graph represents all referrals that came through Preschool Assessment Center over the last three years. As you can see by the orange bars, the number of referrals have increased each year. There was a 10% increase from the 2122 to the 2223 school year, and a 34% increase from the 2223 to the 2324 school year. For students found eligible for special education services, which is the blue bars, there was a 3% increase from school year 21 to 22, from 2122 to 2223, and a decrease of 15% from school year 2223 to 2324. Children with disabilities ages 2 to 5 receive special education services in various environments. Preschool Environments is one of the indicators, Indicator 6, that is reported on for the school division as part of the Special Education Performance Report each year. This indicator identifies the percentage of children who are attending a regular early childhood program and receive the majority of their special education and related services in a regular early childhood program. It defines a regular early childhood program as one where at least 50% of the children are typically developing. The data in this graph represents the number of children with disabilities who receive special education services in the early childhood special education setting. The blue bar on the end shows that as of January 15th, which is when we originally created this PowerPoint, the division was already serving 556 students in this setting. As of February 1st, we were already up to 577, so it just shows it grows each week. So at this time, I'm going to ask my colleague Laura Silverman to share some information related to the pre-K program.
Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Laura Silverman, the Director of Title I Programs. Virginia Beach City Public Schools proudly offers a pre-kindergarten program to children with the greatest need as identified by factors determined by the Virginia Department of Education. Pre-K is a full-day program that follows the Virginia Beach City Public School calendar and school hours. The program serves Virginia Beach children who are four years old on or before September 30th of the school year for which they are attending school. Virginia Beach City Public Schools uses braided funding to support the implementation of our pre-K program. Braided funding refers to using multiple funding sources to support the implementation of a program. The first funding source is the Virginia Preschool Initiative Grant, also known as the VPI Grant. The VPI Grant distributes state funds to school organizations to provide high-quality preschool programs for our four-year-olds. The second funding source is the local budget from VBCPS. For each VPI student slot, both the state and the local educational agency are responsible for a portion of funding. The third funding source for our pre-K program is the Title I Grant. Examples of ways in which we use these funds include, but are not limited, to payment for classroom supplies, field trips, summer learning opportunities, support staff, professional learning, and family engagement events, initiatives, and supplies. Our school division is committed to pursuing opportunities to expand early childhood offerings. The table on this slide shows a historical progression of how we have increased the number of students whom we serve since the start of the pre-K program. We are proud to share that since the 2016-2017 school year, we have increased our pre-K program by 250 student slots. Currently, we have 954 students enrolled in our pre-K program across 53 classrooms in 30 VBCPS elementary schools. Each year, we partner with the Department of School Leadership, Department of School Division Services, and the Department of Budget and Finance to continue to work to increase the number of pre-K slots available. As you can see on the slide, we're planning to increase our program to 1,008 student slots for the 2526 school year. Our pre-K team offers an application process for Virginia Beach families that is as easy as one, two, three. This past January, we opened our pre-K application. In Phase 1 of the application process, families are invited to complete the online application linked on our school division's website. If a family does not have access to a device or the Internet, they may contact our office by phone, and our staff will support families in completing the application. If a student is eligible for the program, they move to Phase 2 and are invited to sign up for a virtual meeting to verify specific documentation for the program. If a family's not able to participate in this meeting virtually, they're provided the option to meet face-to-face to complete this phase of the process. Once Phase 2 is complete, all information is reviewed by our pre-K office. By early summer, all families receive communication regarding placement in a pre-K classroom or on the waitlist. For families of students who have been assigned to a classroom, additional information is provided so the family is aware of the next steps to complete registration at their assigned school. Now, allow me to share a brief overview of the instructional focus and assessments used in our pre-K program. Virginia has a unified set of comprehensive standards for children ages birth to five years old, which are called the Early Learning and Development Standards, or ELDS. These standards articulate the skills and knowledge that young children should learn and be able to demonstrate so they are well-prepared for kindergarten. We use the VDOE-approved Stream and 3 curriculum to facilitate the teaching and learning of these standards. In order to assess our students' learning, our students participate in the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program, also known as VKRP. In addition to monitoring student performance, both early childhood special education, or ECSE, which Dr. Myers Dob explained earlier, and pre-K programs also measure teacher-student interactions by using the Classroom Assessment Scoring System, known as CLASS. Trained internal observers visit classrooms, score classroom interactions using CLASS tool, and facilitate feedback sessions with teachers and teacher assistants to honor their strengths, develop goals for growth, and design personalized plans of support. In addition, the information gained from using CLASS helps to inform future supports in professional learning for teachers, teacher assistants, and school administrators. Our school division works to engage and empower families and promote access to information that supports the success of our students. Several times throughout the school year, families are invited to join family focus events where our pre-K team partners with community organizations to share information and resources with our pre-K families. Some community partners we have collaborated with to support these events are the Department of Public Health, CHKD, GrowSmart, and the Virginia Beach Public Library. Another opportunity we offer our pre-K families are discovery nights. Both our families and pre-K students are invited to participate in virtual sessions where they learn about different skills being taught in our classrooms. Each family receives all of the instructional materials needed to participate, both during the event as well as to continue learning at a later time. Another family engagement event we're proud to facilitate each year is our Classroom in Action Event. This is a time where families are invited into our pre-K classrooms to experience a day in the life of a pre-K student. When a family attends a Classroom in Action Event, they are first provided a mini-workshop that focuses on how families can support academic learning in the home environment. Then, families join their child for a portion of instructional time in the pre-K classroom. Another opportunity that our office offers for Virginia Beach families is the reading bus. The main purpose of the reading bus is to promote and model early literacy skills to preschool children and their families. The reading bus visits VBCPS pre-K classes, community stops, and community events. The instructor reads aloud a story to children and introduces them to an assortment of age-appropriate activities designed to engage them in literacy. We've partnered with the FACE Office, the Virginia Beach Police Department, and the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia to enhance the reading bus community visits and show a collaborative approach to supporting our youngest learners and their families. We understand the importance of providing a meaningful and smooth transition for our preschool-aged children into kindergarten. Every April, VBCPS rolls out a kindergarten registration campaign where the community is provided information about the steps for families to take to register their children for the upcoming school year. To support successful transitions, IEP teams hold meetings to discuss services and supports to address the needs of students with disabilities. Our pre-K program collaborates with the Virginia Beach Head Start to coordinate school visits for their students so they may visit their home schools where they will attend kindergarten. Also, VBCPS pre-K students receive summer reading packs to build their home libraries and provide access to literature over the summer months. For the past several years, we have invited pre-K students to attend our summer learning camps at 10 of our Title I schools. Students are provided opportunities to participate in literacy and numeracy activities while also being able to continue social interactions with school staff and their peers. Additionally, when a family registers their child for kindergarten in one of our Title I schools, they receive a set of books as well as a welcome to spread the love of reading with our students and families. Last summer, the Department of Teaching and Learning, the Department of School Leadership, and the Department of Communication and Community Engagement worked collaboratively to create a kindergarten readiness video series. These short videos offer essential information to help families prepare themselves and their children for a seamless transition into kindergarten. The videos are available on our division website. During the summer of 2024, we piloted the Ready Set Kindergarten Program in three of our Title I schools. This program invites incoming kindergarten students with little-to-know preschool experience to join a summer program at their school just weeks before the first day of school. This allows students and families an opportunity to be introduced to their school, build relationships with school staff, learn school routines, and have exposure to academic activities. We are pleased to share that we are planning to expand this program for the summer of 2025. Thank you for the opportunity for our offices to share information about the early childhood programs in VBCPS, and we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick?
How many pre-K students apply but are found to be not eligible?
It changes every year, and it's a moving target because every year we are replacing. I'm still placing kids right now that, when a pre-K student leaves right now, we don't leave the spot unfilled, so we put it back in. So we have a waiting list, yes, and we typically have a long waiting list, which is also another reason that shows there's a need, there's an interest, and that's why we continue to try to make efforts to grow our program each year. But we do have a running waiting list, and we do communicate with families that when a spot becomes available, we'll work to fill that spot throughout the entire school year.
What makes a student not eligible for the program?
Sure. So, Virginia Department of Education sets certain standards, they're called the Big Four, of what are criteria for us to find a student that is eligible. It's not universal pre-K, so there are certain items such as income is one of the Big Four, if a family's homeless is a second, if they're a student with disabilities that falls within a certain income bracket, or if their family or their parents do not have a high school diploma. Those are the Big Four. There's also local risk factors that the state approves, things such as like if you're military-affiliated that can be, help you to be eligible for the program if there's a spot that's available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much, Ms. Silverman. I'm not sure if you guys have this information or someone else, but when I started with the program in 2017, it was mostly Title I-funded, and now I'm seeing that, you know, it's a mix of Title I, local, and state funding. Do you have like a percentage of how much is of each, or do you not? I mean, you might not know, and that's okay.
I do.
Oh, okay, good.
I don't have an actual percentage, but I can give general numbers. There's a certain portion. For the VPI grant, it's always based on the governor's budget, so that can change from year to year. But based on this year, the local requirement of our school division was a little bit over $3.5 million. The state's requirement was a little over $5 million, and then the Title I grant dedicated about $1.5 million.
So, I'm asking only because should we need to adjust funding, it's not gonna kill the whole program?
That's a loaded question, because it depends on what "kill the whole program" means.
No, we would still have funds available for the program should we lose some of it, is my question.
There are funds that can get put towards it. Each funding source funds something, a different part of the program. So, things such as teacher salaries and benefits, and TA salaries and benefits are funded through the VPI grant portion, which is both the local and the state match. The additional items that we do to enhance our program, things such as instructional supplies, classroom materials, field trips, summer programs, that's all funded through Title I.
Okay.
And so, it's a moving target, but, yeah.
But I wanted to make sure that we weren't fully Title I.
Not fully Title I.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Chair Weems?
Thank you. So if my child is on the waiting list, because I've heard about this waiting list, may I call and ask where I am on that waiting list? Will I be told you're third or you're 38 in order to make alternate plans, obviously, if I'm way down? Is that information given out, or is it not?
Great question. We typically tell when you're the first on the waiting list, so when you're about to be given a spot, we will contact the family to let them know that. We don't tell them the exact number, and that's also because of as we're collecting applications, which it's to, it's based on what are the needs and where you rank, and that can change. But when you're first on the waiting list, we don't knock you out, and we always let the families know that you're first on the waitlist.
Okay, okay. And then, on the slide, I guess, for the Preschool Assessment Center referral data, do you know why there was almost double referred and, you know, the last year only half? Because usually, there's only like 100, 150 more, and then that was a huge jump. Is there any reasoning behind that?
I can't speak to any reason why the referrals increased, again, because we get them from the Infant and Toddler Center, but also, parents make those referrals. I can share, because I knew that you would probably ask me this question, that I did look at, of the 1,011 referrals that we had, the team suspected 673 of those students may have a disability and move forward with evaluations, and of that 673, 508 were found eligible.
Okay, that makes, well, that makes more sense and is more consistent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Green?
Thank you, and Dr. Myers Dob. I just wanted to make sure nothing has changed in the last time you and I have worked together. Your preschool assessment program is still part of Child Find?
Correct.
And do we still report that information to VDOE in that December 1st Child Find, the special ed report?
Well, it's part of the indicator data, so yes, that is something that they look at.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure. And Ms. Silverman, the only question I have, when you start your process for pre-K, does that align with the process for kindergarten, like the dates and things?
For the application process?
Yes.
We actually start earlier to give a longer window for families and for the message to get out. We opened January 22nd this year. It was actually several weeks earlier than we've done in the past to try to expand the amount of time, and we run it continually, so there will be overlap for kindergarten, but we start earlier for pre-K to give families more opportunities to hear about it. It's not a first-come, first-served, so just because we did have families that at midnight applied doesn't mean that a family who applies tomorrow isn't considered, so we encourage anyone who's listening, if you think you might be eligible or your child will be, it never hurts to apply, and we encourage you to do so. And we also bumped up our schedule so that we can communicate with families earlier for placement. So your question, Ms. Weems, so that we can be working with families to let them know earlier so they can make the necessary decisions for their family if they're getting a place or if they're having to find alternate childcare.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you so much. I don't see any more questions. And I also appreciate how you talked about that kindergarten transition there. So next, we have an update on instructional technology and update on AI. Welcome Danielle Calucci, Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Sharon Schubridge, Director of Instructional Technology.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Danielle Calucci, and I serve as our division's Chief Academic Officer in the Department of Teaching and Learning. In a moment, I will welcome Dr. Sharon Schubridge, our Director of Instructional Technology. Her team oversees instructional technology implementation throughout our division in all levels of our schools, elementary, middle, and high. This team partners daily with our academic content teams in the Department of Teaching and Learning to ensure our students are receiving the highest quality of education and utilizing technology to enhance learning experiences of students and to also ensure that they are doing that in a very safe way. Please take a moment to review the four key takeaways from today's presentation. First, Dr. Schubridge will review how instructional technology has evolved over time to meet changing demands and expectations. Second, you will have the opportunity to explore the importance we place on balance when it comes to implementing technology in the classroom. As Dr. Schubridge will share insight on screen time, as we all agree on the importance of an appropriate amount and usage of devices in our schools. Dr. Schubridge's team and the ITSs ensure that this is prioritized. You will also learn about our state's guidance on digital literacy, a core competency essential for preparing our students to be future-ready. And finally, you will be able to hear how artificial intelligence is a growing component of digital literacy with profound impacts, not only in education, but also within the workforce we're preparing children to enter. At this time, I welcome Dr. Schubridge to the podium.
Good afternoon, everybody. To properly describe the evolution of instructional technology in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we have to go way back to the 80s. In the 80s and 90s, the Virginia Department of Education called for the integration of technology into schools to prepare students for a digital future. Early efforts focused on computer literacy, expanding in the 1990s to include technology in core subjects. Teacher training, technology-related standards of learning, and initiatives for equitable access were introduced. The VDOE secured federal funding and business partnerships to enhance infrastructure. By the mid-1990s, school prioritized internet connectivity and networked classrooms, marking technology shift from an enhancement to a fundamental learning tool. Virtual Virginia was created in 1989 as a satellite-based program, as a satellite-based distance learning program. Initially, it provided advanced placement and world language courses to students in rural and underserved areas. Over time, it evolved into a comprehensive online learning platform, expanding course offerings and incorporating modern digital tools. In 1995, the VDOE adopted standards of learning which included technology-related standards, and at the same time, Virginia Beach City Public Schools created the Computer Resource Teacher Position to be in alignment with the state's expectations. By 1998, the VDOE began requiring teachers to pass the Technology Standards for Instructional Personnel Assessment. This mandate was established to ensure that educators possess the technological skills necessary to integrate technology effectively into their teaching practices in classrooms. By the late 1990s, early 2000s, the VDOE and Virginia Beach City Public Schools adopted email systems to provide better communication. All schools were equipped with a computer lab and a computer resource teacher, and all classrooms had at least one classroom for the teacher to use. From 2003 on, you can see the state and division-level use of instructional technology moves us from computer labs to one-to-one. In 2004, the Virginia Beach Digital Campus was created to provide distance learning opportunities within our district. World language courses at the middle school level and a variety of courses at the high school level were offered. The division began installing interactive whiteboards in classrooms in the early 2000s to deliver dynamic and interactive lessons. In 2012, the Bring Your Own Device Program, which allowed students to use personal electronic devices aligned to acceptable usage for education to enhance their learning experiences in the classroom. Around this time, the first online textbook was purchased in Virginia Beach for a high school social studies course. Per a directive from the School Board, all textbook adoptions after this included the expectation to review potential online resources for inclusion in the curriculum. The VDOE initiated the transition to online standards of learning starting in 2000. By spring 2011, approximately 2.2 million SOL tests were administered online, and later, the Virginia General Assembly mandated all SOL tests And later, the Virginia General Assembly mandated all SOL tests to be conducted online, with some exceptions for students whose disabilities required others. In two thousand and thirteen, the Virginia E-Learning Backpack Initiative was introduced as part of the state's efforts to integrate technology into education. The program provided funding for the purchase of laptop devices for ninth grade students in qualifying schools to assist in the transition to digital learning. In the two thousand and fifteen sixteen school year, the Digital Learning Anchor Schools Program began a pilot to explore the integration of technology into classroom instruction. The initiative provided students and teachers with access to devices, digital resources, and professional development to support the implementation of innovative teaching practices. The lessons learned from the Digital Anchor Schools informed the expansion of technology initiatives across the district, including the adoption of one-to-one technology and the learning management system. This evolution has been evident in each of our strategic frameworks, as you can see in the last row of this table, where I have lifted out language from the corresponding frameworks for each of the years listed. As you may be aware, our current strategic framework, Compass to Two Thousand and Twenty Five, also includes a strategy focused on the effective and efficient use of technology. As you know, our strategic framework is a living document that guides our work and that changes as we reflect on our learning. When Compass to Two Thousand and Twenty Five was introduced, it included a strategy to expand the effective and efficient use of technology to meet students' individual needs and provide them with the tools for accessing, creating, and sharing knowledge. And while we were well positioned to manage the pandemic because we were a one-to-one school division and we had always shared the importance of utilizing technology to enhance a learning experience in an intentional manner, post-pandemic, we recognized the need to emphasize the emphasize the importance of balance when using technology and changed the strategy to reflect this. Balancing the use of technology continues to be a critical consideration with respect to instructional technology use, particularly given increased concerns over screen time. It is important to highlight not all screen time is created equally, and there are several types of screen time. From a global ed tech post on screen time, the author breaks down the different types of screen time, and I think these are important distinctions for the next portion of this presentation. If you research screen time quotes, often the quotes are in reference to social or passive screen time. Social screen time involves connecting with family, friends, and others via social media chats or video calls. While limited use may support social functioning, excessive time can reduce face-to-face interactions and lead to poorer health and socio-econom- socio-emotional outcomes. Passive screen time is consumptive use, such as playing video games, scrolling apps, or watching TV. It is often considered antisocial, limiting creativity and real-life experiences. Research suggests passive screen time is the most harmful, offering no physical benefits, and leading to lower to worse behavior and lower persistence. In contrast to social and passive screen time, the type of screen time we are focused on is educational. Educational content, when well-designed, can have a positive impact on behavior, literacy, and cognitive ability. Not all programs or apps labeled educational provide value. However, the Department of Teaching and Learning vets each program we purchase and recommend for instructional value. High-quality digital resources can offer differentiated learning opportunities that benefits our students. Of course, balance is still key, and so is the selection of high-quality digital resources. I have listed on this slide some of the ways our students utilize, some of the way our students are utilizing their Chromebooks and computers during school and after school as related to educational screen time. It is important to have this distinction in regard to educational screen time as we look at the next slide on the average screen time in each grade level. On this slide, you will see the average number of hours per day that students at each grade level were actively engaged on their Chromebooks during school hours. These data were collected September first, two thousand and twenty four, through January eighth, two thousand and twenty five. To orient you to the scale, point five represents a half an hour of active engagement. One point five would be one and a half hours of active engagement. I will give you just a moment to review the slide. As you may have noted on the previous slide of all the grade levels represented, the middle school grade levels had relatively higher bars. I would like to provide you some additional context to the nuances of middle school. Their textbooks are all online, and they all utilize Securely Pass to request time out of class. So these applications stay open longer. So while this may look like a lot at first glance, know that hands-on learning, paper, pencil, and collaborative projects and movement while learning are priorities, even if the Chromebook is open, to access information during learning activities. A student begins their day by logging into Class Link, a single sign-on tool for accessing all school applications. They may use Securely Pass to request time out of class and access Canvas, the state's learning management system linking curriculum resources. In English class, they use Actively Learn for readings and assignments along with tools like NoRed Ink or Lexia Power Up for additional practice. In science, they utilize a digital textbook to complete tasks, work on graphic organizers, or discuss content with peers. When the student gets to math class, students access MathSpace, the middle school online text resource through their Canvas course. Students may use Desmos, the scientific calculator that is used on the SOL test, or may go into iXL. Again, often Securely Pass will be open. This should provide a picture of the educational uses of technology during the school day, but we recognize it is important to strike a balance between no-tech, low-tech, and intentional tech use. We offer many hands-on, low-tech opportunities for our students to develop their critical thinking skills. Here are some examples of the amazing work our teachers and instructional technology specialists engage with students in the building creating and critical thinking to, oh my gosh, that sentence, I just read it so badly. Can I do that again? Here are some real examples of the amazing work of our teachers and instructional technology specialists as they engage students in building, creating, and critically thinking to problem solve, which takes place daily in schools. These pictures from the STEM Trifecta, which our CTE and Instructional Technology Team sets up a STEM playground for students to explore while they are waiting to compete. Over the last two years, we have partnered with our science, language, arts, and math coordinators to learn how to effectively implement the new standards and curriculum in our school. In addition to activities, the instructional technology specialists are planning with teachers. Our library media specialists are turning portions of their library or adjoining spaces into maker spaces for students to engage in activities that are hands-on, involve critical or creative thinking, and allow for students to explore. LMSs change out the situ- the stations based on instructional pacing or identified needs from classroom teachers. Maker spaces provide hands-on opportunities for creativity and innovation, balancing screen time with tangible collaborative learning. But balance isn't just about how much time students spend on a device. It's also about what they're doing and when they're on them. To truly prepare students for the future, we need to ensure they are not just consumers of technology, but also competent, critical, and ethical users. That's where digital literacy comes in, as a core competency for navigating and shaping our increasingly digital world. The need to focus on digital literacy is specifically called out in the division's recently adopted strategic framework, Compass to Two Thousand and Thirty. But it isn't just a Virginia Beach focus. Our state is focused on ensuring our students are acquiring digital literacy and competen- digital literacy competence and skill two. Legislation was added to the Code of Virginia, which will require local school boards to support digital citizenship instruction for all students and teachers. The Virginia Model Policy was released to guide VB CPS in developing their own policy for digital citizenship instruction, practices, and content. The state is prioritizing this topic that is essential to the education of our students. In helping prepare for their future, these four areas live under the umbrella of digital literacy. And for the purposes of this presentation, I will touch on computer science and digital citizenship. The Virginia Board of Education approved the new computer science standards last year with an expectation for implementation during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The Virginia Department of Education offered grant opportunities divisions could apply to support initiatives that enhance computer science education by funding the development of high-quality instructional resources and providing professional development to integrate computer science into the curriculum effectively. We applied for and were awarded two grants this school year. The first focused on mathematics instruction, and we had triads of an ITS, a math coach, and a teacher from schools at each level to receive professional development and to create with us instructional lessons to be shared at the division. The second grant, similar to the first, focuses on integrating computer science into science and social studies lessons, grades six, gates, grades K through eight. VB CPS has developed a goal for digital citizenship instruction that is positive and proactive in nature. To emphasize the importance of digital literacy, we host two contests every year. This will be the second year for our podcast contest and our fifth year of the digital citizenship contest. We encourage entries from every school and have worked with ITSs to find ways to embed the contests into learning activities. But beyond these activities, the most integral part of our current work is the student instruction on digital citizenship concepts. Research in this area indicates that for this type of instruction to be impactful, it is important that students feel it is authentic, current, and relevant to the way they truly use technology, both inside and outside of school. Students are much more receptive when they can engage in discussions about and reflect on their use of social media and other technology platforms as opposed to passively receiving information about what not to do online. Therefore, we recognize that the lessons needed to be developed by experts, but easy for teachers to facilitate. We tasked the team of ITSs and instructional technology coordinators with developing curricula that meets this criteria listed here, but quickly realized that in order to provide a robust program that truly meets student needs, we would need to investigate other options. Building a strong foundation in digital citizenship is just the start. Preparing our students for an AI-driven future means staying committed to learning and adapting. AI is transforming the future of work, shaping industries, creating new career opportunities, and redefining the skills needed for success. To prepare students for this reality, it's crucial they develop a strong understanding of AI, how it works, how to use it responsibly, and how to adapt as it continues to evolve. With this said, we remain committed to limiting screen time and ensuring students are only engaging with technology in a safe manner, while also ensuring our students are prepared for the future awaiting them. In a recent report, Future of Jobs Report Two Thousand and Twenty Five, the World Economic Forum examined changes to the global markets, global labor markets, and found that roles such as big data specialists, fintech engineers, and AI and machine learning specialists are expected to see significant growth. I'll pause for a moment. In the same report from the World Economic Forum, it also shows how much change there has been in AI-related predicted growth, automated tasks, projected automations, and the growing demand for AI as a core skill in just two years from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five. I will give you a moment to review this information. Jensen Huang, the CEO of Nvidia, one of the largest technology companies in the world, recently said that you're not going to lose your job to AI. You're going to lose your job to somebody who uses AI. If we intend to help our students be future-ready, we must teach them about how AI works and how to use it effectively. Even though AI will become an increasingly important part of digital literacy moving forward, we have to recognize and address the challenges it can bring, which is why the division has taken a slow and deliberate approach to introducing artificial intelligence. We began our journey in the spring of two thousand and twenty-three with conversations at the senior leadership level, identifying hopes and fears associated with the use of AI, which helped us develop our initial set of guiding principles for AI use. At the July two thousand and twenty-three School Board Retreat, David Din, our Chief Information Officer, and I provided an overview of this work where we defined AI, shared the initial guiding principles and resources we've created. As indicated in the summer presentation, our approach to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year was to provide staff with opportunities to explore and experiment with vetted resources. Because of application age requirements and how learning language models are built, we did not provide access to any students as we were intentional in learning more about AI capabilities ourself. We also modified School Board Regulation five dash thirty-four point two, cheating, plagiarism, and the acceptable use of new technologies to address academic integrity and emerging technologies. At the July two thousand and twenty-four School Board Retreat, David and I shared examples of how AI had been implemented in controlled environments and specific use cases, as well as updated guidelines that included language for high school students. While we continued on our AI journey in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, the Virginia Department of Ed also understood that learning about AI was critical to the success of schools across the Commonwealth. Beginning in the fall this past year, VDOE partnered with the Virginia Association of School Superintendents to provide professional learning and networking by region focused on AI. Labeled the Virginia Gen AI Year of Learning, this professional learning series included five meetings. We have hosted all five of the Region Two meetings. The meetings are all-day in-person sessions that convene teams from each of the divisions in Region Two to learn about advancements in AI tools, learn more about ethical and privacy considerations and implications for implementing AI in schools. The intended outcome of these regional meetings is the development of division-specific AI frameworks and guidelines. Our next steps include integrating computer science standards into math classes across all grade levels and into science and social studies for grade K eight students. At the high school level, the plan is to implement a rigorous digital citizenship curriculum to ensure students navigate the digital world responsibly. With respect to AI, next steps include closely monitoring legal considerations and case law around AI use in K twelve education, ensuring compliance and ethical implementation. Based on teacher feedback, we will finalize a comprehensive professional development learning plan to help educators effectively incorporate AI tools into their classrooms. And lastly, our plan is to continue to explore appropriate AI access for high school students, ensuring these tools support learning in meaningful and responsible ways. Thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions.
Waiting for it to shut.
Oh, I was like, yes, there's none. I got excited. Oh, there's a bunch of you up there. I'm ready.
Okay.
Ms. Felton?
Dr. Schubridge, thank you for this detailed um, report. Appreciate it. I vividly remember in two thousand and two, when I was at ODU taking classes, praying that the system would not change from floppy disk to thumb drive, as I'm not ready to change. So that takes me back, but floppy disk was a thing going on, but it changed before I could get out. It changed. Uh, my question to you is since two thousand and two, and you talked about the word balance, and I do appreciate that as well, screen time as to what we do. But what are our options now? Are we getting more eBooks compared to our hardback books? And uh, is the cause for eBooks, hardback books, is there a difference in how we are doing that?
And you're referring to textbooks?
Textbooks, correct.
So there was a request by the school board, there was a directive by the school board to ensure that each of our textbook adoptions around two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen um, included looking for electronic resources as a as a viable means to deliver the material. It is cheaper to purchase the online um, digital resource than it is to have the hardback. In many of our curriculum, we have a series of the hardback to have in schools for students that really need to have the physical copy of the book, but the majority of the licenses come through a digital content. Middle school is the heaviest. All uh, all of our middle school text resources um, are digital. They're in a digital format. Um, there's some in high school, but as you get into some upper courses like calculus and some of those, it's a much smaller textbook adoption, and often those are a hardback, a hardcover purchase.
Mr. Callan?
It seems as though if I were to try and briefly summarize what
It seems as though if I were to try and briefly summarize what little I know about the world of A I. It seems to be the ability to access a greater depth and breadth and speed of information. To either understand something or to create something that didn't heretofore exist, such as a report or an analysis of sorts. It also seems to me that. The world revolves around some of the recognized names in the marketplace such as Chat G T P or G P T. Whatever the combination of letters is. Uh, and they seem to be resources that are available and there are additional products that that are the marketplace makes available. That I believe you can pay for, and I think one of them is something called Claude. But all of that to say, when we are inter interfacing these resources with the students themselves. Are we using products that the marketplace is creating or are these things that? We're somewhat packaging and making available for the students, which would indicate some degree of oversight and control. Whether, in contrast, if they're going out into the marketplace, it's outside of our scope of control. I'm not even sure I know what my question is.
I think I'm following you, so let me try. Okay, the first thing is, none of our students currently, when they're on their Chromebook, can access any of the marketplace. Things, they can't get to Chat G P T, it blocks them, currently in the way we have our Chromebook set up. Because we were still in a slow intentional approach. When we've talked about what do we open for students, when we do say for high school, and I will say it will be for high school students only because everything has a thirteen and up. Student requirement, and so we're not even rolling it out to middle school or elementary, so it's really high school students when I speak of it. It would be in something that is a controlled environment. So Gemini, for example, is Google's version of Chat G P T. Gemini makes me feel better if we teach students how to use that because it lives inside of Google, which lives inside of our walled garden. And they don't use the student inputs to build their learning language model. That matters to me, that our students aren't unintentionally putting something in that then is used to build the model on the outside. So when we do open something for students, it will be in a controlled space. I can't control, as you all know, what happens when they leave us. Um, and there are probably students who access Chat G P T outside or some other tool that they have found they like outside. But what we will try to do is keep something that's very controlled um and monitored for students. I hope that I kind of picked up what you were putting down.
You did pick up on the sense of it, and again, as we discussed during the summer retreat. This is running at such a rapid pace that, God bless you, good luck, hope you can keep up with the speed at which it's happening. Much less the kids that we're trying to instruct by using these tools, but uh, it's stunning. It's somewhat amazing and exciting. But uh, uh, at the same time, somewhat terrifying when you realize just the rate at which this is all exploding. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mister Cummings.
Yeah, just looking at slide twenty four, um, I'm thinking about the about implementing digital citizenship curriculum at the high school level. And then looking back at slide nineteen, talking about the Future of Jobs Report. And I'm very curious about curriculum being developed um with credentials that the industry recognizes. Um, and if that's gonna be part of the curriculum rollout at the high school level, so as we're thinking about like. A I and machine learning, you know, is there gonna be opportunities for credentials in languages like Python? Um, or R Studio or things like that, and so that's kind of just one of the things I was just thinking about.
That's a great question, so some of those are available at like the Advanced Technology Center, so to get some of those certifications. I don't know that it would be part of our um general digital citizenship instruction because we would want that to really be geared towards. The curriculum it's taught in, for it to be meaningful for students and for teachers. So I was speaking with a principal who um was talking about how we could really get it into high school curriculum. And it would be intentionally placed, but not enough that you could earn a certification. There are other places where we can direct students if they have an interest in that to get certifications for those programs. Ms. Rogers.
Thank you for your thoroughness. Um, I have two questions that are kind of opposite ends. First of all, um. Are you guys working with anyone, um? I don't know if there is a place at the college level because I'm finding that having a college student and a high school student right now. That there are practices that are being kind of accepted sometimes at the high school level, and then they transition to college. And they're finding that they're being accused of cheating when this is something that they've been taught in high school, so. Like, I wanna make sure that we're bridging that gap, that we're not sending kids from high school off to college. And then they are now being accused of doing something that they've always been taught to do.
So that's really why we are trying to get a more rigorous rigorous curriculum into high school for students to to have that conversation with students, for them to understand. Um, sending both of my kids off to college, one of the things I said was you need to ask what their A I policy is, like upfront. Teacher, what is your A I policy? Because some people are okay if you're using it to create or to collaborate. Sometimes you could use it for a tutor, but you need to understand what your teacher or professor's expectations are. But we have to get that message to all students, not just those of us working in the field who are thinking about it, but how do we make sure that? That's part of the senior year curriculum is the difference between what you're doing here and what might happen uh when you get to high school.
Right, perfect. And then, of course, I have a middle schooler, so going back to slide eight. What are we doing? Because I know that before I came up here, I was out there seeing that. Such a high middle school usage, I would love to see us bring that down to more of where our high schoolers are at. And is there a way that we're working on doing that?
We continue to work with our instructional technology specialists to talk about closing the Chromebook. We we talk about that a lot, we've been talking about it actually since the twenty one twenty two school year, when we had such a shift to everything being. Online, you know, to now we're back face to face, how do we get everybody talking again, how do you get back to working together? As I tried to share in the scenario, if I, if you went into a middle school classroom, there's a really good chance. A student's device is open, but they're not using it, but it has to be open because they might be accessing the curriculum as they're filling out a graphic organizer. Or the teacher might say, read this first paragraph, and then I want you to turn to your partner and whatever's happening. But the device is still on, and the device is still open. We use securely pass, which is how a student requests access out of a classroom. Well, that kind of has to be running the whole time, because I, oh, the student came back and I wanna go, the teacher's monitoring, she gives permission. We continue to just work on how might we um. Close the Chromebook so that it's not continuing to monitor that it's open the whole time, because you walk into class, they say, open up your cannabis and I'd like you to go to this. You go there, but it's directions, might not be what you're doing the whole time, but it's open, so.
And I think it's just a little bit more, because I see the high schoolers, they would have the same problems, but they're just not on it as much. And so I'm hoping that then we can find a way to make middle schoolers not have to do that because. I would feel um. It would make more sense if we saw high at high s- high school levels as well, but we're not.
Ms. Rogers, if I, if you don't mind. It's a great question, and she addressed the high school a little bit around, they don't have as many online textbooks when you look at it being open, but. I hope one of the things you've heard from Dr. Smith and several presentations around middle school is a focus on Avid. Every one of our middle schoolers right now has a binder, one binder system that they access on a consistent basis to take notes. To document their table of contents. So we're having a heavy focus of shutting that down. I wanna bring that back because that takes many of you back to your educational days of a notebook and a binder. That there is a lot of focus around, one, collaborative study groups through Avid, the one binder. How are you taking your own personalized notes there? Teachers are checking those binders, Socratic seminars, which is a more collaborative conversational tool through Avid, so. It is a, it's been a major focus in all professional development with our building leaders around how are we incorporating those collaborative structures in there? So I share that because I think sometimes we miss, we think they're only grabbing, caring around a Chromebook. Our middle schoolers all have a binder, we've given all of our middle schoolers at Renaissance a binder. So there is that component of how are they utilizing non-technological items.
And hopefully our Thrive Time might take care of some of this as well, maybe?
Certainly a good hope to have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Um, yes, I share those concerns, um, because that really stood out to me. How many hours are our middle school students in school? Seven, is it seven point two? Or six, what is it? Six point four, so that's. Okay, so that's four hundred minutes, and of that four hundred minutes, thirty minutes is lunch. So now you're down to three hundred and seventy, and then how much is P E? What I'm getting at is there on the Chromebook, two hundred and twenty-five minutes. That's almost all of instructional time is the way that my math comes out, so. And and I thought, maybe I just totally misunderstood this, because I thought our last talk about the screen time was. It doesn't count if it's just on and they're not doing anything, because I thought that, because I thought that was odd, because I thought somebody asked, well. What if they're just reading something, they're not actually answering questions or doing any work? And I thought I understood that that doesn't count in this total, is that, was that wrong or?
No, but if you, if I'm on a screen, the second I move my mouse, it's tracking. Right, so within like a a minute time, if you at least touch the, if you touch the keyboard, if you touch the screen, it keeps counting.
Okay, but if I'm reading, it's not counting in that time. Or but but even if I scroll the page, it would count.
Scroll, you put, scroll the page.
But if it's on for a bathroom pass and I did the bathroom pass or whatever, and then I don't do anything, it's not still counting that time after my last bathroom pass. Unless I'm doing something.
Correct.
Okay, okay, um, I think that's just way, 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 way too high. I mean, it's the, I mean, basically, I look at it as if you're an instructional, in a class, in a core class, you're on, you're on the computer. That's what the data is telling us, so I would also like to see ways that we can reduce that if at all possible, and I know we can. Um, also, do we have any case studies or data that shows? One-to-one Chromebooks from K through second grade. That that is really helping our students to be more academically successful. And also, usage of Chromebooks at middle school, that is helping our kids to be more academic, you know, academically successful. I, I mean, I don't even know where to go with this, I mean, that.
So the kindergarten, first, second grade numbers, if you look at that, the average is about thirty-five, forty minutes a day. Before the pandemic and before we were one-to-one, our kindergarten students were doing that, our first grade students were doing that already. Because we had three to four computers in a classroom, and during your elementary, during your language arts rotation, one of your rotations might have been twenty minutes on the computer. Um, engaging in some activity. That amount hasn't really changed from prior to being one-to-one to where we are now. When you look at those numbers, our students in K two are, most of them do not take it home, so they're not taking it home and using it at night or on weekends, it's really just. For ease of access during the school day. If kindergarten first and second was higher, if that was like the one hour, two hours. Then we'd be wondering why they're on the device so much, but it's really that language arts and math opportunity for them to use their own device. Easier to log on, I've got the same device every single time, it's my password and I single sign in and I'm good to go. Then having to go to either the three Chrome, the three devices over here or pulling something out of a laptop cart that we might be sharing. Okay.
Well, that's good that there hasn't been a change.
There hasn't been much change.
I do, I I do want to request if we could just kind of have some, have some feedback in the future of how we're going to lower that middle school. Because if you take away lunch and and an elective and P E, you pretty much got a hundred percent of an, of core subjects on the computer, on the Chromebook, thank you.
Mister Cummings.
Yeah, just a quick question, because I don't know if I heard this, when you're counting the the total amount of time. Is that just the time that the user is on the computer during school hours, or is that also counting the time that they're on the computer like at home? Like, is there a time block on the?
This data we pulled was just the school day.
During the school day?
This data was just the school day.
Well, I think that, yeah.
And I would like to share this because we did pull data when it looked at the whole day and. The feedback at the time was, well, this now skews the data because they're on it at home and that makes it seem like more hours. But the majority of our K through five students don't take the device home, so you're adding in a lot of zeros. So the average actually was better for them last year because it was over seven days versus five days, so. We really wanted to just look at during the school time, what did that look like?
Yeah, I think there's also a a good reminder for our wonderful parents watching at home to check out those securely reports that we get. Um, and remind our beautiful, wonderful children that they are using their computers appropriately during class time too, so thanks.
We always appreciate that message. Mister Culpepper.
Not really a question, I just wanted to say a little bit, kind of piggyback on what Mr. Weave just said. But I seem to recall last year, when we talked about this roughly last year. That's, that I rec- I recall us making a commitment, uh, not just to reduce, but to eliminate Chromebooks in kindergarten, did we not say that last year?
I actually rewatched the tape and that does not ring a bell.
All right.
I actually rewatched this portion to make sure that we were addressing some of the things that were brought up then, but. I'm not sure, and I'm, and I don't know that we could eliminate Chromebook use in kindergarten altogether. There are um applications and skills that are available to our youngest learners that really helps the teacher gauge how a student is doing. We use Seesaw in kindergarten, a lot of our Seesaw, kindergartners will read um and record it on Seesaw for their parents to be able to see. Look how far I've come in reading, there's lots of things that we're doing with the device that I think would be um, would put us back. Versus still having access, it is such a small amount of time, we are not um. Trying to think of how to make it less, we just still want it to be intentional, that there's purpose and intent for use.
Well, I really did like that slide you had that basically said exactly that, you know, that. We're not just looking to have these things present, but they need to be useful, so I think I'll, rather than belabor this bit, uh, Ms. Weave brought up the point. Uh, that she'd like to understand what benefits there are, tangible benefits that are improving education from using Chromebooks. But I think the other thing that's definitely not getting captured is where the costs. Because one pops into mind right away, which is penmanship, which I think more broadly says skills to write. Which are, of course, things are being learned in those early grades, and I, and I, I think there's some loss there, that we're not capturing in it, uh, I think we should try to.
Okay, thank you, um, I actually, um, I don't see anybody else, so I have some questions. Um, so my first question is, is there any evidence to show that the one-to-one technology for our youngest learners? That is kindergarten through second grade is increasing student academic learning and achievement, for example. Do we have any proof of increase of reading on grade level? Because the data that I have reviewed uh does does not um show that, and if the. Um, devices are being used the same amount, why, why are we paying for one-to-one technology? So that they can be utilized the same amount?
I'm happy to, but if you want to.
Thank you, I think that's a great question, Mrs. Brown, I think we have to also keep the goal in mind of the one-to-one, so. Um, we have so many diverse needs in our classrooms, the goal of the one-to-one would not be. Um, overall, to increase on-grade level reading, we don't teach reading that way. We teach structured literacy in our early grade levels with the foundational literacy skills in mind. Um, with speech to print focus, um, with touch, we have pushits and manipulatives now. Even at the small group tables, um, to teach those phonemes. Um, and build our children's fluency with decodable texts, we believe in texts in hand. That said, we do have computer science standards, starting in kindergarten, that we have to teach. Um, we might have really advanced learners that we can um engage when the teacher is working with those hands-on. Um, activities and reading that another student be, could be reading on a differentiated program. Like Imagine Reading or Imagine Math, it differentiates for them and they're getting some. Um, customized instruction and practice. As you saw for the data, that's a little amount of time in our K two classrooms. We're also testing them um, beginning in third grade, so building their um. You know, adaptivity and their ability to um, you know, move their little fingers. And know how to navigate those devices is also important. They even have to get used to how to scroll a text for that third grade assessment, um, and it does give us some good data. So uh, even in um, second grade, we're getting some really good data, formative assessments that makes the teacher's job very. Much easier to put that data right into a spreadsheet, see who's, which kids need to be targeted, so. I think it's overall, you have to look at the big picture of the why. Um, and keep in mind in K two, we absolutely are not spending very much time on those devices. If you would go on a learning walk, you would not see very many kids in those grade levels, our teachers are masterful at hands-on learning. And it's a priority, um, I always think it's fun to watch this team when they're giving professional learning. Often the message is, close the Chromebooks, it's no. It's no tech. And if there is going to be tech, it is to enhance the learning experience. It should take a lesson somewhere it couldn't have gone without that technology. Um, like a virtual trip to the zoo. Some kids may, may tour the Taj Mahal and then get to write about it. So, um, there are some really innovative, great things happening with those devices. Um, so I hope that kind of paints a better picture of the intentionality of the usage.
And, and I think it does, but, um, my, my question as it relates is really, why are we doing one-to-one devices when it doesn't increase? There isn't an increased, um, need being filled by doing one-to-one devices for these youngest learners? So, um, uh, Dr. Schurridge just said that these minutes are the same as they were before we shifted to one-to-one. So why are we doing one-to-one devices for our youngest learners? Is, is why, and it's not really a question, I think it's rhetorical, is a rhetorical question. Um, mom of a kindergartner here. And, um, I have a lot of friends with kindergarten students, um, both public and private. And I, I can tell you that one thing that really sticks out in my mind is a, a birthday party I went to recently where many of the, uh, parents had chosen to go the private school route. And the number one reason they gave was because we're doing Chromebooks one-to-one in our division. And so, you know, I, I also, I'm not offended that my daughter's using a Chromebook at school personally. But, and it's not just about me, but, um, I also, I, I have a little bit of a pause by putting in a five or a six-year-old's hand, okay, here's your issued device, especially when, and I'm going to hand something out to my colleagues here from a high schooler, um, in our, in my district that's written. And you, you can see the, um, the letters, um, and how they're written. And, you know, I, I think to Mr. Culpepper's point, the penmanship is what I am worried about, is suffering. Um, and then I, I also share Ms. Rogers' concerns about the, the middle school time. Um, you know, I, I think more than just saying we, we want to see, um, hopefully reductions in these times. I, I think we need to be a little more intentional about communicating that. So, um, Ms. Melnick?
Well, if I may, I just want to, I do want to address with the Virginia Literacy Act, that is a huge focus. Um, K eight, the penmanship, it's in the standards. And, um, we absolutely are having our children write with pencil and paper and teaching letter formation.
So I have the pleasure and honor of visiting schools all the time. And I just turned to Mr. Bowenstall at one point and said, I, there, I see the, so much going on in classrooms that don't have to do with computers. But I, the last middle school we visited was Salem. And there were kids doing exactly what you were talking about. The, the computer was open, there were references, but they were working in small groups and they were all writing, all of them. Um, and so I do think that we have decreased our screen time. I, so kudos to the division for, for the balanced piece. Um, and for penmanship, we could probably go back to the beginning of time. And we were, I mean, I was taught the Palmer meth, Palmer method. And my handwriting is unbelievably beautiful. I'll give myself that pat on the back, it's beautiful. When I write or write a check, people say, my goodness, did you print this on the computer? This, you could have your own font. But my brother, who's sixteen months younger than me, he's an attorney. Um, his handwriting is horrific and he learned from the same people that I did. And so I don't want to like pigeonhole handwriting because that's a very, I mean, just not everybody has that gift of being able to write like that. But he learned from the same exact teachers that I did. And so, um, I don't want to lose that point that spending an extra hour in penmanship is going to make each student, you know, give each student their own font. So, um, but thank you.
Well, two things about writing. Our new textbook that you supported us in adopting at the elementary level has a huge emphasis on writing. And if you've talked to any elementary teachers or principals lately, they are amazed at what our first graders are writing now. And so I think that's a huge division celebration that, um, we can all be proud of, that's making a big difference. In talking to secondary English teachers recently, they have the concerns about AI maybe being used at home, not on our devices, um, and the critical thinking skills. And they have really been prioritizing having kids write on paper in class and giving each other feedback. Now, again, the Chromebook might be open because they're accessing a prompt all at the same time or they might submit an answer. But, um, that is being prioritized at the secondary level as well, just writing freely, um, with pen and paper.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, we appreciate that. Ms. Lanetti, do we have time to do closed? Okay, Ms. Williams, will you please read us into closed?
I moved at a school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meeting laws set forth in Code of Virginia two dot two dash three eleven, Part A, Paragraphs two, seven, and eight, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting. If such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or in which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advi, advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Namely, to discuss A, pending student matter investigations, B, stand, status of VEC COVID claims review, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litig, litigation matters.
Moved by Vice Chair Williams, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Hearing nine, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Ms. Dwyer, how do you vote to go into close? Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, the motion did pass to go into closed session.
The motion did pass to go into closed session.